It's recording.
Okay, good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock on July twenty seventh, two oh two two. This is the Enfield Planning Board. We are meeting in person. I don't think we have anybody signed in yet on Zoom, so we'll just consider this an in-person meeting. We have four regular members present. Would you like to be elevated to a voting member tonight? How about you, Whit? Okay. So roll call from my left and we'll do it starting with Whitney.
Whitney Banker, our Recording Secretary and Alterator.
Dan Kylie, Vice Chair.
David Frack, Chairperson.
Bill Vermeer, Secretary.
Tim Jennings, Member.
And Jim Bonner, Alterator and the Y'all.
Okay, as I said, we do have a quorum. Two, three, four, five, six. Do not quite have a full board. So for those who are coming before us in a public hearing, you are by state law entitled to a hearing by a full board of seven people. So we can't meet that requirement tonight. If you're willing to continue with the hearing, we can do that, or we can continue it until our next meeting, which is on the tenth of August. And Rob, I hope I'm correct in that statement of law.
Got it.
Okay. So first item on the agenda is comments from the public that are not associated with any agenda item. I see none. Next item is Select Board Report, and I see nobody from the Select Board. Let's do something that we can do. And to alleviate the sometimes shortage of full board members, Brad Rich, who is the gentleman in the turquoise shirt, has very graciously joined to, agreed to join our board. It's summertime and the Select Board did not meet this past Monday. Kate has indicated to me that she is excited to have Brad on the board. I'm sure that Eric would also approve of it. And that would be a majority of the board. So they'll be meeting next Monday, I believe, at which time Brad will be considered. And I see no reason why he won't be joining us on the tenth of August for the hearings that are happening then. So Brad, do you want to just kind of introduce yourself and give the quick elevator speech?
Sure.
Your background?
I lived in Enfield permanently for the past couple of years. Before that, I was in Massachusetts, working and living and raising a family. Before that, I grew up in Wilder, Vermont. So the Upper Valley has been my home for a long time. I'm looking forward to working on the planning board.
Thanks. And we will officially welcome you next time. And I do appreciate your coming in and listening and learning tonight.
I'm learning.
His parents owned a cottage on the lake probably forty years.
Yep, yep.
Black Crystal.
Yep. Okay, next minutes from July thirteenth.
I'm gonna make a motion that we table the minutes. Reason being, I'm looking on page four of the minutes and it shows a roll call vote, which passed seven to zero. But it also shows three people abstained. I think what happened is we're missing where the minutes were approved. And I believe those minutes had, I know the minutes were amended. So I think we'll need them for the next meeting with the amendments approval and amendments in.
Okay.
Both that we table it for until the August tenth meeting.
Do we have a second for Brad's motion?
Second.
All in favor of tabling the minutes until the August tenth meeting indicate by saying aye. Aye. Poe? Oppose? No extension. The last one?
Yes. Are the draft minutes posted to the website currently? Thank you.
Okie doke. Next. I guess we'll consider this a warning. Case number P twenty-two dash oh seven dash oh three. Stephen Doyle has applied for minor site plan review approval to add two apartments to his three apartment buildings at fifty-nine Baltic Street, identified as map thirty-seven lot twenty-two. Property is located in the Community Business zoning district and is owned by Stephen P. Doyle. Steve? Do you wish to continue with a less than full board?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you come on up? We've got your packet, but I would like you to kind of walk us through the map that you've drawn here and tell us where the new apartments are going and we'll ask you questions about stuff like parking and screening and trash and all that kind of stuff. So the floor is yours.
Okay.
Declare the public hearing open. Now the floor is yours.
All right. So the existing map that you're looking at has the outline of the current building as it is. However, the three apartments that are existing are in the middle portion of that building. There is a wing to the east and a wing to the west, which I believe is outlined on that map, should be. Those are currently vacant and under disrepair. So my plan is to first take one of those vacant areas, the one on the east side of the building, working with a local contractor by the name of Tom Buckwald, who's lives in Plainfield. And the previous owner had done a lot of work in demolition and shoring up the foundation on that side. But for whatever reason, had discontinued their work. So I would like to continue that work. Turn first that east side into a viable rental unit. And then at some point further down the road, do the same thing to the unit on the west side.
Good. At some point, I brought the tax map up on the order. I activated the plan and metric layer. You can see the photo of the of the house right there on the lower right.
So the two wings that you say are now in disrepair. And what were they previously to the demolition that previous owner had?
I don't know for sure. I was never given that information during any of the the sales or discussions. My assumption is those were previously parts of the existing house. I think that it probably started as that main central area, and over time, they added on more living space. Again, I don't know that for sure. I know that they were living space. The the unit on the west side has lac and plaster walls, you know, very well delineated. What would have been rooms? The unit on the east side is completely gutted. So.
Okay. So total will be five apartments when you're done?
Yes.
Okay. And you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven parking spaces.
Correct.
Which is more than adequate. And what size did you measure them out to be?
The parking spaces?
Yeah.
I believe I measured them to be you know, honestly, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I
I pulled up the plan and metric text card. Hold on a second.
I
Get down here as you mentioned. It's not really showing the east side.
Yeah.
West.
I did put a scale, I know, on the on the drawing that I had made.
Twenty-eight with a big foot porch, six foot porch?
Well, the scale on this is an inch or thirty-four feet. I haven't scaled it out.
I I know that when I did look it up, I did some research to find out what a standard parking spot is. And there was some variance from narrowest to the widest. Then I tried to shoot for the middle essentially.
The standard is ten by eighteen or something.
We're gonna talk about that later.
That's the standard. Ours is ten by twenty.
We don't
We don't, we do not know at this point.
Would appear to be if you took the porch off. It's very similar dimensions on both sides.
We're short of the ten part.
Right.
And I had thought that. Let's get into that later.
Later. This map is to scale at least ten feet.
Okay.
Yeah, and even, yeah. Right, like I say, it's still got more than five.
Yeah.
One and ring that even expanded. Yeah.
I guess my other concerns, because when we do a site plan review, we try to bring everybody up to essentially current standards. So it looks like you've got plenty of room for snow storage.
Yes.
And what's your arrangement for trash at this point?
So currently with the trash, I, for my tenants, do what the previous owner had done. And she actually left her bins by the curb at the bottom of the driveway. My plan, although I apologize, I didn't add it in here, as I add tenants, currently I have two trash bins, two recycling bins. I would need to add at least one more trash bin, one more recycling bin. I think in my discussions with you, Rob, that Casella will allow you one bin, one trash, one recycling per unit. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so my plan would be to expand to three at first, see if I can use that and not have to over utilize and take up too much space. If I did need an additional unit, if I found that they were overflowing, needs more use, then I would then ask Casella for an additional can. And then in that case, also establish a specific fenced-in area for the cans to stay.
Okay.
You can actually call.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So those are my questions. Board members have any questions for the applicant?
No, good. Straightforward.
Okay. Members of the public have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Board members will debate. We'll start it up, Dan.
I can start out with a motion if you want.
If that's what you want to do, go ahead.
I make a motion. We accept the site plan as presented.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Poe's? Tension. Done. From here, I will write up a decision. Usually I get those out within two weeks. There is a thirty-day appeal period. If you do anything during those thirty days, it's on you because somebody in theory could object and appeal the decision. By guess, by educated guess, because nobody is here objecting. You know, you're gonna sail through it. So thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
And good luck with your expansion of your building and new tenants.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great.
The house. The house. Thanks for seeing us.
Okay. Yeah, we have P twenty-two dash oh seven dash oh four. James Kelleher has applied for major site plan review approval to build a six-unit apartment building on Main Street, that thirty-one lot thirty-seven. Property is located in the Community Business zoning district and is owned by James Kelleher. Jim, you want, you're already.
I'm James Kelleher, and I'm accompanied by Jeff Foster, Engineering Ventures.
Let me let me officially say that public hearing is opened. And the floor is yours.
And kind of you're okay with it.
Oh, yeah. You guys are okay with this? Six members?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm here, here before the board to present site plan review to redevelop seventy-one Main Street. They, it's a six-unit, two-story apartment building. The building is seventy-eight feet long by twenty-eight feet deep. When I bought the prop, when I put the property under agreement back in two thousand sixteen from the Stanford estate, there was that storage building in place, which was thirty feet by seventy feet. In order to pass papers to Stanford, I had to get permission from the state of New Hampshire, rails and rails, because the Stanfords were leasing the property. The Department of Transportation allowed me to apply for ownership through the surplus property program. And through that time, from planning to actual obtaining the deed from the state of New Hampshire, was in September two thousand twenty-one. In the meantime, I had gone through several design phases as to originally, I was looking at you doing a five-unit apartment with garages underneath to bypass the the issue without retail on first floor. Since that time, I obtained a variance from the town to build within the setbacks and a special exception to eliminate the deed for retail space on first floor. So the proposal is six one-bedroom units. Building would be super insulated. Electrical power for heat and hot water. Service by town water and sewer. The parking lot entails seven parking spaces with one assigned for handicap accessibility. The building will have three common entrances. Each entrance will service the first floor and second floor. The building will be sprinkled right for fire protection. The walkways and entry into the parking lot is all handicap accessible. Ramps. Parking lot be lighted by two L E D pole lights, one on the building side and one on the western portion of the parking lot. There's also a a Liberty Utilities overhead light that lightens up where the access is to the driveway. We are in the shoreline protection area. So in order to buy for shoreline perimeter, we had to come up with a stormwater management plan, which Engineering Ventures has designed that. And if there's any technical questions about the site plan, Jeff can certainly answer.
These apartments are one-bedroom or two-bedroom?
One-bedroom apartments. They have one, one full bath. Showers only, no tubs. Handicap adaptable on the first floor. It'd be onsite in-unit washer and dryer units. Dryers will be heat pumps, so there's no ventilation outside. The hot water heaters will also be heat pumps. And the heat and A C will be Mitsubishi type of heat pumps.
Let me say, I think the concept of what you are proposing here is great. It's gonna help revitalize our downtown area. And as a member of the planning board and the master plan task force, I think we're really happy that you're trying to put together a quality product. That having been said, I do have a couple of concerns about the plan as I see it. First off is parking. And you'd expect nine by eighteen. And as a board, we're confused about the eighteen because some of our regulations say eighteen, some say twenty. I'm willing, and I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that the rest of the board is willing to give you the eighteen. But I'd like to know where the nine came from, for the width. Is that in our rec somewhere?
I don't, I don't believe that was in the rec. See, with the shallow nature of the of the lot itself, it becomes an issue with having ten-foot stalls. So nine by eighteen is is common used by a lot of the area towns. It's pretty standard. So we had knocked it down to a nine by eighteen to get it to fit.
Okay.
We may be able to push that out at ten, but it's 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 gonna create issues with the slope coming off of the rail trail down to the parking.
Other question is on snow storage.
Yes.
Snow removal, where is that gonna go?
Pretty much off to the sides unless, once you have a plan for.
Yeah, I think I end up with a twelve-inch buffer between the parking lot and the the west apartment, seventy, seventy-nine Main Street.
Yes.
And then I've got another ten feet on the rail trail side.
Okay, so good goal.
There's plenty, plenty of room.
Okay.
Worst-case scenario, you know, if we get a lot of snow, which doesn't happen very often, where you've got to move it out with a, you know, a backhoe and a bag.
Yeah.
Can I tell them?
Absolutely.
I've seen quite often further up the street towards the laundromat, the parking lots up there often get plowed towards the rail trail. And this winter, they're spilling over into the rail trail, snow piles. And so I was wondering, depending on how, of course, you move your snow, but I suspect a lot of it, as you just said, is gonna end up in that area between the rail trail and the parking lot. There is a slope there that's fairly steep. But I think at the top of that slope, would you consider putting some boulder barriers across there? That would be a signal to your plow driver. I can't push that any further than that because there's a boulder. Or something to that effect.
Mm-hmm.
Pushing further towards the rail trail?
Yeah, you don't want that snow pile to spill over into the rail trail.
I mean, personally, I'd prefer rather than not going to go on the west side of the parking lot, utilize that area. I think you should stay away from the rail trail.
That's over here.
Be about twelve foot from the parking lot to, I think it was like thirteen to fourteen feet from the seventy-nine Main Street.
Well, I I can see you doing that, but something with a large snow pile that's gonna melt. You're gonna wanna make sure the drainage from that does not impact that problem below. People in the audience, I'd like to see the big setup.
Would the, about bollards as opposed to?
Sure, anything that
Anything solid.
Yeah. I should have prefaced my comments also with the fact of what David said. I looked at this initially and I said, you know, this, this is a pretty creative use of a very small lot. So my comments and my suggestions are really all about helping you guys, whatever, to make this thing work as best as it possibly can. And I think because it's such a small lot, such amount of activity there, maybe in a little more detail here than perhaps we would for fifty-nine Baltic Street, which is a huge lot, you don't have to worry too much about things like that. So I, so the barrier between the rail trail and then, then I think, I think you're gonna need to address the drainage of that snow area. It'll go off to the west, west of the parking lot. That seems like that building sits pretty low. I don't know what the finished floor elevation is versus, you know.
Considerably higher than the
Maybe this would be a good time to have our engineer explain the drainage system that you've created. I'm not familiar with the kind of subsurface collection thing that you have. So if you could just, you know, give it, give us an overview so that we have an understanding of how it works, how much water it could absorb over one time period. Anything else you can tell us that will help with our decision making?
These are just typical, basically high-density polyethylene arches that are corrugated for strength and they have an open bottom. And you surround them with stones, six inches either side, or six inches top and bottom, and then there's a foot between them. And the idea is that the stormwater comes in, fills the arch, filtrates out into the stone. And it retains it there because we have a smaller outlet pipe. So we're reducing the amount of flow that's coming through. We're holding it in the stone for a while as it slowly seeps out so that we maintain the same amount of outflow that there is currently. So it's just, it's simply retention.
What sort of weight can those arches hold? Whether it's if I was to drive a cement truck over it?
Yeah.
Am I gonna ruin it?
With the, with the foot of cover, they're H twenty rated. So these should have no problem. No problem being parked on.
Okay. So we talked a little bit about the snow storage renewable, removable, and I think I heard you agree that bollards would be acceptable. At one five-feet intervals, six foot?
Yes. They wouldn't be able to drive between them.
So you are we talking about the west side of the parking lot or the
Rail trail.
The rail trail. I don't think you're gonna be able to drive up there anyway. You gotta, it's a steep slope, right?
Just step down, step down rail.
Yeah, I I I think, I think all you need is just sufficient barrier there, be it bollards or boulders. As a signal to the snow plow driver.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to do is get some specifics that can be included in the decision, whether it's bollards or boulders or a combination. And at what sort of interval we would want them to put us. Do you have any thoughts, Jim? What's that?
Something like an eight. Something like eight feet.
Eight feet?
Yeah.
Yeah. And are we talking bollards or boulders?
I guess we should do either, right?
Does it matter to us?
I, I think aesthetically, boulders might be aesthetically better and a little more consistent with what is between the laundromat and the woodshop. Brian, you have any thoughts?
Uh, I think the snow, I don't approve, whereas the snow gets piled up there, it's from the state.
Again?
The state generally is the one who makes the big piles, and then I can tell you for a certain fact that boulders do not stop the state from pushing them onto the rail trail.
So maybe bollards would be in the.
No, I think the boulders are fine, but I'm just saying, there's less snow than you think. If you're saying, well, there's a lot of snow on laundromats, that's the problem that was created by somebody, not because it's the people who own the property created the piles.
So the, well, the town clouds that rode in the winter. You're saying the town clouds across your parking lot?
Yeah, they say they can.
Okay.
Cause it's currently not been used.
Previously, they, they got a little aggressive last winter, that you had to walk around that pile if you were on the trail.
Yes, it did, I know, I had to dig out, they also piled on top of my propane tanks. Right, so that was a very sad scuffle in your house when I ran gas. Also, uh, as one aside, if he does need boulders, I have uh, I'm tougher than nearby.
I've got a few too.
This, this is a site plan hearing, not a, an option. Okay, um, my last concern is uh, how are the residents gonna handle their trash and recycling?
Uh, we've got a uh location on the plan for six of the uh uh, it's all tote. On the backside, uh, the west side of the property.
How are those indicated number wise?
C eleven.
C eleven.
Yeah. C eleven.
I'm not.
Right here.
Oh, right there, okay. Um, so six is good, that takes care of their trash. Assuming one per unit?
One per, over two units. One per unit.
And.
And, and the other thing I was thinking, um, I'm not a particular fan of looking at freaking totes all over town or all over the property. And uh, the uh, employers are big enough that uh, I could actually adapt them so it'd be inside the foyer so we didn't see it, having, having spent a lot of time on them.
I guess my question is, we need totes for trash and another one for the recycling stream.
So if you take throw all of your trash, including recycling, you probably need one tote for each building, but if you're gonna split it, recycling it, rubbish, I think you're gonna.
Three, three.
Yeah.
Yes.
Green tree.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might work.
Yeah.
He's entitled to one of each per unit.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
But it's a space issue, is what we're, so it wears a, absolutely. He could put the recycle like lawyers if he wanted to, cause those aren't gonna give you smells.
It is a frustrating thing, I think, in infield to see all those toders all over the place.
Yeah.
They're nice to work.
Uh, any questions from board members? You have anything I have, Kevin?
Yes. So the parallel parking space shown on the main street, you have approval from the state for that?
Uh, no. I've talked to uh Chris Turgeon about it, he's got a copy of the plan. And uh, he asked me about the same thing I said about, so that's a kind of a wish list. As it may disappear when we get the site worked on, but uh, so that I don't need it, cause I got no spaces in the front. And that's also where I, that's in the same location where all the mailboxes are located, the apartment across the street.
Okay.
So I wanna read a, a letter that came in or email that came in uh this afternoon from uh, Richard Holmquist. And just to get it into the record, and says, hello, Rob. Thank you for sending the site plan review, can't make it to the meeting tonight, but I have a couple of concerns. Parking is absolutely minimum for six apartments, in my opinion. I personally rent four of my nine parking spaces to local apartment renters. Patios on the rail trail will get used and potentially people will be very dear to travel. Thanks for sharing my comments, by Richard Holmquist. So that uh, I'm not quite sure what he means by the patios. Uh, being near the traffic, being near the rail trail.
B twelve, yeah.
Yeah.
Rail trail is.
Right here.
Yeah. Well, I think that, me that reads as a comment about how I wouldn't wanna live there and be on that patio. Snowmobiles are going by or whatever, but that's not our issue.
That's not our issue, exactly.
Thing about the parking. He's, he's entitled or required to have one space per unit.
Plus a handicap.
Plus a handicap.
Which he has.
He's meant that. Although, I guess just speaking about this in a more general terms for the future. I was looking at the Z B A and it's the the thought that a single bedroom apartment, you're only gonna have one car per, I, I don't think that's gonna be the case. There'll be two cars for, almost that for most of these apartments. However, uh, you're entitled to, to build this thing with one space per unit, but I think that's something we need to think about.
I, I would agree going forward, and I, I think the answer is kind of implicit in Richard's quote, in which he says, four of his nine parking spaces are rented to other apartment dwellers, and I take that to mean that he has five rentable spaces. So if there are people that have uh second cars, um, they probably can work deals, Mr. Holmquist.
And actually at the Z B A hearing, uh, uh, Kim Cork and Tipp Tumis, the putters across the street with the Revision Energy had sort of piped up with this renting parking spaces.
Right.
Easy money, so I mean, they've got lots of parking in the back of their building. So I agree with what Tim is saying, that, you know, there's, there's that, but it's funny, I've, I've been at uh seminars where they talk about out west where you know, they had these real strict parking regulations, and the cities out there, Portland, Seattle. We're seeing like limited growth and limited things happening, especially with the A D U ordinances, and when they sort of backed off and said, let the market sort of take care of that, things happened, and there will be people like Mr. Holmquist who will rent space, I don't know, a hundred bucks a month.
Right.
So he's making four hundred bucks a month, I don't know, whatever he's making. Maybe Brian Degg would rent some of his spaces. Uh, it's an economic opportunity for somebody, so.
Yeah, and um, you know, until such times we change the regs and it might be, you know, one and a half spaces per unit or, you know, we don't know.
And it, and you may not have to have it onsite.
Well, we don't have to have it onsite right now.
Right.
So, you know, I, I, I think the fact that you have the required number of spaces onsite that, you know, that covers you as far as we are concerned. And the market will decide, um, you know, if somebody with two co, or a couple, two cars wants to rent one of your buildings, are these rental or, or purchase by the way?
Right.
Rental, so you know, if they wanna rent it, um, either they're gonna find, you know, somebody who can rent them a space, or they're gonna look elsewhere, so that's totally a market-driven thing, so. I don't, I don't have any issues, um.
I'll get a couple of it.
Go ahead.
And so drainage, and a site as tight as this, of course you have to pay attention to what I call micro drainage, every little drop is gonna make a difference. And I noticed the north elevation gets its nice dormers on the building. But they drain directly onto the sidewalk. In fact, the dormers direct the border runoff directly onto the entrance. So not addressing anything about the aesthetics of the building, that's not our purview, but that's something I think you need to move that sidewalk outside the rip wall. And then think about either uh an entry canopy or some way to make that happen, unless I misread you.
No, I, i- it's been a concern, absolutely, uh, we started out with sidewalk pushed away from the building, but because of the stairs, the set of stairs that are needed right there, uh, between the eighty-eight ramps. If we've moved the sidewalk any closer to the road, the stairs are gonna end up in the right of way, and nobody wants the stairs, so. We pulled the sidewalk back up to the building, and there's, there's gonna have to be a, a roof gutter, which we've accommodated a drain pipe for that, for connection of a roof gutter along that side to try and prevent all this water from dumping onto that sidewalk.
I could see that working, but for the, the style of roof that you've got currently designed, it doesn't allow for a gutter to go from one end to the other.
Yeah, but that could change it, that's not, that's not, that the plan is not cast in stone.
Okay.
So I could uh, you know, run a simple press system when it goes wrong, there's like further, so they're not uh, you've got a continuous roof line. We could run a continuous kind of.
Great. So you can't uh, you can't proceed on the project until you get shore land.
Right.
What's that?
You can't proceed on the project until you get the shore.
You can't do uh, any excavation, right?
So I, would that be a, uh, it's approval with the contingency of?
Exactly, because we can't, it's, it's kind of like D O T. You, it's like a driveway cap.
Yeah.
We have to make it a condition, but we can't not approve it because of something another another government agency is in charge of. So we end up saying, as long as you get it approved, it's yours, we're good.
And this building has a basement.
Basement, no.
Roll space.
Essentially, it's low.
Okay. Well, you must have some creative way of dealing with your water sewer entrances, but.
Yeah, well, let me talk, before foot, uh, frost walls, five foot frost walls. Utilities would be put in backfield and done the slab on, right?
Okay. Uh, and just, just a, a note you might wanna ask public works, perhaps you already have Superman hole that you show in the street, which your building is to drain. Uh, that may not be required, just, it's something you'd ask. They get a bunch of money. They're okay with that, cause none of the rest of the buildings on that street have, have those features. Okay, uh, we talked about light.
We certainly can.
Would you consider a lamppost that was complimentary to the town street lamps? That's, that's just a request, nothing we can demand. So I'll just leave it at that. Uh, and I noticed your lighting does show color spectrum for the L E D lan, uh, lamppost to be three thousand K, which is, it's really good.
It's a nice warm, yeah.
Yeah, the buttery lamp color. Yeah. So, okay, here's, here's another one. You know, just a comment, this is not gonna be a requirement or anything, but consider adding sound attenuation to the design of the south elevation walls. Those mobile, mobiles come roaring through there at eleven at midnight.
Well, the, the frame and uh will be uh Zipper six on the outside sheathing, so there's a continuous inch of styrofoam with uh, uh plywood bonded to it, then inside is going to be all spray bonded.
You're probably being good shit.
That'll happen.
Again, not something that we can require, but just curious, has you thought about E V charging, electric vehicle charging?
Actually, uh, we've got a conduit that's running uh under the parking lot to the west side where the both lamps are, and Kim Cork uh, you know, recommended to put uh, while you're doing it, run the conduit. So it can, if somebody comes up with one, they'd have to pay for the charger, but the conduit's there on both sides of the parking lot.
Yeah, well, that's a good thought, so that's a good idea, yeah. That's all my end.
Any other board members have questions? Members of the public, your turn to ask questions, Brian.
I haven't, I don't really have any to say, so I think this is a great idea. Downtown infield, uh, nothing has happened recently, right, as uh, I'm still kind of planning on, so is the laundry, it's not, not viable, I have the coffee shop by the mission that you guys approved. It's been quite some time, but that's getting momentum. So the more people, the better, and that's usually how it goes, the more, more residents that you have, the more people that business leads to. So I think these, a couple of these little things going forward, it'll really help uh kickstart and build that down.
Thanks for your comment, anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, I am closing the public hearing, and comments from board members.
Going, we close to having a list of conditions?
Well, before, before we do that, I would like to have a decision from the board. Do we accept the nine foot wide parking that he's got? Or do we send him back for other variants? Or what do you wanna do?
Have the authority to extend it.
On the regulations.
It goes against the regulations. Rob, do you have a, a thought?
Yeah, it's definitely in there, I mean, it's definitely in, it's in the, it's in the R one and the R three and the R five, but it's not in the C D specifically. Right? To go into later sections, as David and I have looked at.
Yeah.
There is reference to ten by twenty. And there is also ten by eighteen in there.
In the definitions, it's a ten foot by whatever. And I, you know, my only concern here is the ten foot. What do we wanna do about that? Jim, any thoughts?
Well, I'm inclined to cannot get quickly over small detail like that. But if you're saying we don't have the authority, that's another issue.
I I don't, I don't think we have that authority.
You guys could say that you, you want the ten by eighteen, that is in the ordinance. And if he wants to go, if he really needs the accommodation for the nine foot, then he'd have, then he'd have to go for another C B A variance. But if he could fit the, if he could come, if they can accommodate, if you can accommodate a ten. So if you've got an extra three feet on each side, there's not, there's not three feet.
No. No, it's, it'll push that whole parking lot four feet closer to the rail trail, and we would have to have a retaining wall, and we've been told we, we can't have a retaining wall there. We told you that was earlier on, um, the railway, correct?
Well, the railway's got, they've got, the state's got a ten foot right of way on my property.
Correct.
For railroad operations. Now, we all know, the high-speed bullet train is not coming through.
The train's not going to Montreal forever.
The deed says specifically railroad operations.
Right.
So if I did do a retaining wall. And the railroad did come coming through, I'd probably lose pockets, right?
So can we? Can we approve? Or could the condition be as Rod suggested? If even up to the if the property owner. Choose which way I want to go.
So you're suggesting the. Condition would be either change it to ten feet or get a variance, if I understand you correctly?
Yes, but would and if they did the ten foot, they're figuring figure out a way to get ten feet. Would they need to come back and see us?
No, because we we have we would have approved it. As either or. And in order to get a building permit. He's going to have to show one or the other, either a variance or he's redesigned the parking lot, so he's got ten foot wide spaces.
What's your schedule? Scheduled construction?
Stop it here at this point. I don't want to do anything until I get the shoreline permit. Let's start. I don't anticipate the. On start construction this year.
So there's time to get it to be able to get that regulation changed. If Lebanon and other towns.
Not until town meeting.
We can't get that changed until March.
That'd be rules. That's town meeting. I mean, if I'm not sure, I'd want to change them.
If what other towns are nine foot?
Yeah. The problem with the nine foot is everybody's driving pickup trucks now.
Yeah, go go to go to Hanover in that parking lot.
On that street.
Yeah. I mean, it's it's hard enough. For me to get my small Jetta wagon there. Yeah, I've seen pickups there, as long as you can climb out the sunroof, you're okay, but you can't open the door. You have two pickups next to each other.
Could we could we phrase this in? Require ten feet or a variance and that the planning board. He encourages the CBA to to grant variance.
I don't see why we couldn't put that kind of language in our decision, Rob. Is there anything wrong with that?
So that the DVA could. Downsized those to nine feet.
Yeah.
With a variance.
Yeah.
variance. CBA doesn't have to listen to you guys. They're free to do whatever they can do whatever they want.
Okay.
All right. So. To to answer Tim's questions about a list of conditions. What I am looking at are a shore land permit from the state. Bollards every roughly eight feet.
Or rocks.
Or rocks, boulders. Along the south edge of the parking lot as a guide to whoever's plowing. You know, something.
Whatever.
Rework the gutters and drainage in the so that. You're not getting water dumped on the north sidewalk. And. I think maybe if we just put a note that who comes up with a plan that's satisfactory to. Our code enforcement. Believe it to the anti people that are more knowledgeable about this kind of stuff than we are.
Just want to say, sorry.
Go ahead and interrupt. No problem.
All right.
I I interrupt people all the time and.
Okay, well, another another drainage thing that pointed out was on the south end. Going to store snow between the parking lot and that other building. That needs to be treated in. Designed drainage structure or. Wow, seems to be paid.
Probably for using the rail trail. We wouldn't use that, so.
Well, then, Tim. And I think you probably need to grow a bollards across there.
Across the west side.
South side.
So. We're talking about the the south side, are we not?
Yes.
And and the south side only.
No. The bollards were protecting the rail train along this. South side, yes, okay. The west side, sorry.
Right.
Between here and this house, if Mr. Keller is saying he's not going to push snow through there, then there needs to be a physical barrier to prevent that. Every angle signed in there. No, it's just natural slopes down, just created.
That's self-bollards open there too.
Yeah.
So there is a retaining.
There's a small existing wall wall.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but it's yeah, it's right on the corner of the building.
Okay. Guys have a lamppost right in the middle.
Which is why you don't have to.
So we just want to protect that property owner.
I could protect that with the EV charging stations. Do you have a lamppost in the middle?
Lamppost with an EV charger there.
Well, isn't that just one lamppost and charger kind of in the center? Yeah, one in the middle, then a charging station to the left of the charge station to the right. There's going to be some type of post.
Be on post.
Right.
Higher, whatever.
Yeah.
Why don't we add a condition that says. You will install posts for EV chargers. To the left and right of that lamppost.
That's right.
Is that admissible? And you don't have to obviously install.
Right.
Chargers or the outlets. Just the conduit, okay? And if we put that in, that actually. We'll phrase it in terms of EV charging.
I believe a good word would be pedestal. That's what we call it.
Pedestal.
There'd be two of them, correct? Okay. Let's go back and review these, just so we're all on the same page. We've got a shore land permit. We've got bollards or boulders on the south side of the parking lot. To protect the rail trail. From snow being pushed onto it. We've got either a. Redesign of the parking lot, so you meet the ten foot width. Or a variance from the CBA, so you can use your nine.
For the recommendation for your boss.
Right? Two pedestals, left and right of the lamppost of the west side of the parking lot for future EV charging. And that would include conduit to the pedestal.
End that slide. Four. Other barriers to prevent snow from being pushed towards the adjacent building on the south side.
I'd like to. Settle up on the pedestals because that. Puts us forward thinking in terms of making a provision for EV.
Well, I agree, but that's not something that we. It's not at our register. We have very limited. I think you give them a choice and Mr. Keller said he wants to put the name right. I trust him. Okay, if for some reason that you can't do that. That's okay. It's just not something we can.
And this is for the west side?
West side.
West side.
So it would read two pedestals and conduit to the left and right of the western side lamppost. For future EV charging or other physical barriers.
For me.
I'll go with that. And. Rework the roof drainage on the north side. So water doesn't flow onto the north sidewalk. And that will be a building inspector. Decision whether that's, you know, whatever plan you come up with. You good?
Good.
Anything else?
Do you have a state driveway permit?
Do you have a state driveway permit yet? Oh, Jeff, does it exist? Does it exist in current cut there? And. Talking to Chris Sturgis, and he's got this plan, and I said I had to fly for it after I got planning board approval. Okay, so I'll put down. Sideways.
That's why we have to put it in because they won't do it until it's approved.
We can't hold them. We can't hold you up because you don't have.
Chicken or not, chicken is it?
Okay, anything else? That should go into this decision. Jim, Whitney, any thoughts? Somebody want to make a motion?
Make motion. We approve the. Site plan. I mean, we'll refer to Mr. Keller's property or. Subject to subject to the conditions.
Map thirty one, lock thirty seven.
Okay. Somebody want to second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Sentience. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're.
We got eight new units tonight.
We're looking forward to it. Appreciate. Should dress up that part of town.
Yeah.
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 Just taking that old one down, dress it up.
All right, Jim. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Come back with your next project soon.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have conceptual first. Drew Hitchcock or the former roller rink side. Who's Drew?
Who's Drew?
Come on up, Drew.
At the hot seat right here, please. That's what he has to do.
What do you got for us, conceptualists?
Talking to. Uh, yeah, that's true.
Jason, you got two. I love sports.
Dave, do you want to give a little presentation?
Absolutely.
I'm Drew Hitchcock. I own Hitchcock Woodworking as well as Hitchcock Property Service. Woodworking, the stories here, my father started when I was four weeks old in nineteen eighty eight. And I took it over in two thousand and eighteen after working for him for about ten years. I'm looking to expand. And I'd love to add a lumberyard space to be able to sell retail hardwoods and plywood and. Especially hardware and stuff that goes along with that. So we're looking at the roller rink space. I guess. These are some of our conceptual plans for what we'd like to do.
The plan is to tear the roller rink down.
Not exactly.
Just refurbishing.
Yes.
Install a building, yes. Okay, yeah, so this is the roller rink.
This is the roller rink.
Yeah, cool. Wow, yeah, yeah.
So I have my two existing businesses, one would be right in center, woodshop. And then the property services, we only need really a just a maintenance garage at this point, as well as outdoor storage. For our equipment. Parking lot's more than sufficient for that. On the right side, which is closest to Route four, is where I'm proposing the lumberyard. And then above that, you see the paint room that is part of our woodshop and then the offices in the lower corner. These kind of split, it'd be one room, but a kind of with a bouquet or a piece of furniture. Our lumber sales is on the right side where people come in and pay for their lumber from the yard and the woodshop office would be more for our. Office work, bookkeeping and whatnot.
So the lumberyard is the closest to Route four?
Correct.
Yeah, so we're standing looking west, your building, right?
Yes, yes.
Towards the lane. Looking towards the lane, so my 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 right hand house is north. So. Yeah, yeah.
And then we have a prospective tenant that would fill the back space and they are a machine shop and powder coating.
That's this open area back here.
No, that's this area here.
Yeah, so it's labeled metal shop and then there's metal shop office as well.
Yeah.
And there's the two small rooms are the two existing bathrooms from the. Roller rink. And then you'll see in the bottom middle, there's two other bathrooms and that would serve, the left would be the woodshop and the right would be the office.
So Phil, I think that to look at this map here. It's a north-south orientation, so the end towards Route four is actually the north end of the.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
That's where the lumber.
So the lumber. And just a little refresher for all of you guys, probably remember it, but obviously this was for many, many years, the roller rink. Alice Casino.
That's pretty many golf.
Many golf, then you guys actually approved a site plan. For the four years ago for a. Dog kennel. And that Mr. Martin sold it to Tom Hershey, who actually owns adjacent property where you guys did my approval there. Mr. Hershey did a considerable amount of cleanup on the site, kicked down a bunch of dilapidated buildings, removed a lot of trash. Regraded and worked on some drainage issues there and. He's cut the knotweed, although I think he's fighting a losing battle, the knotweed will be back. But obviously cleaned up the property substantially. And he also installed a overhead door on the north end. You probably seen that? That was something he did, I think, before anybody was interested in it, just to make it more of a. You know, property for the size of the building that it was, all it had was people doors on it. Small people doors. And Mr. Hitchcock has been in contact with Liam, our building inspector, and is talking about a bunch of stuff to his credit. And I think Liam is hopefully forthcoming with some information soon.
I did today.
So consult there, obviously, I think some of that consult that he's already had is reflected in this. You got to have at least two means of egress ingress for each suite. On the property.
So he's essentially treating the lumberyard, woodshop, maintenance garage as kind of suite.
Yeah.
Although I do have many forms of egress.
Yes.
Last week.
And I have talked to him, Jim, my brother of the Berksburg, perhaps to be out on vacation this week, but we did talk about the. The. Town water is very close. In fact, it's basically across the street, the. The pressure tank. The, the pressure tank is just up the hill. On a small piece of property, there's a little access drive that goes up there. And there's a, I think it's one eighty-five is almost directly across. This house on, on here, I believe it's this one right there. You can actually see the water tower.
Right.
It's this structure here in that little square is actual town land.
Well, and Linda, Linda Jones has just got tapping water, so does the apartment building.
Nope, they've got a well at the Murphy's top, relative well.
Yep.
Okay, actually multiple wells up there.
Yeah.
So we have talked about, you know, the challenge is Route four. There, there's a, there's a fire hydrant right there next to this house, and these guys are actually the first ones on. Municipal water system, so there is a possibility, if he, if he wants to, we could engineer water service across Route four to get to his. I think that might be, I mean, he's gonna do the work on the, if there's sprinklers required, obviously sprinklers require a flow rate that he may not be able to do with. Probably well, although he may be able to do a cistern, I think Liam's right with that. Cistern would require like a fire pump to be able to support it.
Yeah, so. As this is. A wood shop over twenty-five hundred square feet, which I am, or a factory over twelve thousand square feet requires sprinklers. And to do a cistern and a fire pump before you put one sprinkler in the building, you're looking at two hundred grand.
Right.
So. I need downwater.
Yeah. And your wastewater needs probably pretty minimal.
Yes, there's. From what I am told, there's either two separate septic systems or two separate tanks or two separate leach fields. So it should be well more than what we would use with three bathrooms that aren't really gonna be.
Those would have to be evaluated. Put on a plan and show what's there, I would think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because of changing use. How many people would be working there, you know, not an exact number, but your best estimate at this point?
Right now, my wood shop has four employees, the maintenance side has three, the metal shop, I believe, three or four. I'm, and lumberyard is obviously not. Place, I'm thinking I could. Add two or three, maybe four people in this wood shop, as well as, there's gonna need to be a couple people in the yard and the office. This would give you the space to add that. Right now, where we are, we're just bottlenecked, I can't do anymore.
Yeah. Where are you, buddy?
We're in Wilder, in Bay Street Commerce Park right now, and we've been there for thirty years.
Yeah.
And my dad started in, we started in his basement and then he moved to Commerce Park in about a two thousand square foot suite. And it expanded three times, and then I expanded just this last year to, to one more. Space, so we have about six thousand right now.
And your, your businesses aren't really dependent upon drive by customers, you're kind of a destination.
Yeah, we're, yeah, so we sell direct to contractors generally, so. We sell most of our kitchens, no one never comes to our space. We, I mean, I'll do email designs and whatnot, I'll meet at their space, we'll build it and I'll bring it to them. The point of this lumberyard is maybe to drive some. People to the space. And then. While they're there, there's, there's two separate entities that can also serve their needs there. But it's not a huge volume of, of traffic.
I'm trying to remember. What Percy has done in terms of grading. On the north. On the east side. Because you, you've got. Here too, yeah. You, you've got a couple of. Of garage, you know, big bay doors. And. I remember when it was the roller rink being a pretty narrow. Of. Flat.
Yeah.
Driveway type of thing.
I, I see what you're getting at.
Okay, talk to me about it.
Off the building, essentially, he's gonna pull up if he can get on street view. He's gonna pull up. It's like, it's basically ten feet flat off the building and then it drops down about ten feet vertically.
Yeah.
Part of my proposal is building that parking lot up to flush with the building. So that back portion needs to come up about ten feet and the front is already where it needs to be.
It's a brand new image.
Yeah.
The Zed Camper was just there a few weeks ago.
Yeah, the garage is. Not there in that one.
It's a, but the door, the door is there, that was just a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, and you can actually, if you. Go down the driveway, it'll show the old building. What it was prior to Thomas.
Go up here just a little bit.
Go up one or two and then. Turn and click down the driveway.
It'll actually show us the old?
Yep.
There you go, there.
So it's, it's about halfway there already.
Yeah.
He's got the exterior landscape of it, or at least the excavation portion. A hundred percent better, and my goal is to make the exterior of the building look better. And then obviously fit out the interior.
Because you're, you know, you're, you're gonna wanna get a, I assume maybe a box truck in there or something maybe.
As far as inside the building, the wood shop, we wouldn't need maybe more than a forklift to go in and drop. Material there. The same as lumberyard, I'd like to be on a back of van or something in there, but the door he's got now is fourteen by fourteen, so you can get pretty large truck. These three smaller doors are ten by ten, you can get a vehicle in there.
Yeah.
That's all it'd be.
Okay.
Why we need to get like a lumber truck in those.
Most people would agree that this sign needs to go. Well, you're thinking.
I wasn't gonna bring that up, yes.
Percy's been trying to use it for selling the place, right, like whatever, yeah, yeah. They're having a bunch of. Your lumberyard. Those racks with all the nuts and bolts and everything, you know? So people would come in, because now if I need a three-eighth inch nut, I don't have one, it's stopped. Either gotta drive to Kane or gotta drive to the lab, I haven't get a three-eighth inch nut. I really miss our hardware store.
Yeah.
Um, so. Go ahead.
What about the, or talk to us about the. Zoning district and any sort of variance, is there anything like that that might be needed? From, about that reason? So this is in the CB. And multiple use is absolutely allowed. Only thing that I, I've told him he's gonna need is, is site plan. And the question for you guys would be, major, minor? No expansion of the air, just more change of use.
It's change of view, yeah. So I, I would tend to say it's major just because of the size of the suites.
And I, I would agree with that. But for a different reason, I think the site drainage of this property is gonna be, is going to need some, some engineer. It's not something you can do by. Satisfy others.
Yeah, they answered a lot of training.
Did he have that engineered, did you see?
I have no idea.
He did, not, nothing that we saw, no.
Okay.
You got a lot of surface runoff of that roof, for instance. All that stormwater has to be treated, of course discharged. There's some. Some work to be done there.
So I, I've got a couple of questions. You've got a paint room for the cabin shop? And I assume there's gonna be. Some sort of equivalent, either a, a room or a booth for the metal shop because they're doing powder coatings? And what sort of. Uh, toxic or noxious odors might either of those two operations produce?
I can't speak for the metal shop because I'm not, I don't know exactly what they use. In our paint room, we use one hundred percent water-based finishes, either clear water-based or painted water-based. It's, right now I have a booth with. Air extraction to the outside. You can spray in there without that running and with no mask and you can't smell it, it's.
No molecules.
Yeah, it's, it's not like. Dissolvent based stuff and it's not like the stuff used to be, it's. Minimal at best.
I, I guess we would probably want to look at the metal shop and just see what, you know, what they're doing. What possible exhaust gases might be and what. Mitigation might be required so that essentially the neighborhood doesn't get. Little paint fumes.
Probably something in the building code, right? To get to, on that refurbishing.
Yes. The building code's gonna cover a lot of that.
And I. I guess our original proposal is metal, I mean, this is a tentative tenant, so there's.
Yeah.
There's no guarantees, they will go in there as opposed to someone else, but that's my preferred tenant. Just based on what they do, on coding what I do.
But the maintenance garage is a separate business.
Yes, legally it is, I operate both businesses and the maintenance garage, so it's a property service company, we, we maintain and manage condominiums, houses and commercial buildings. So we need a little bit of space just to work on our equipment. And store some equipment that's, needs to stay inside, but the majority of what that business entails is kind of stored in the parking.
So it's not an auto repair shop? An equipment repair shop? Bringing it slow mo, property maintenance?
Yeah, so we're working on our own vehicles or on MARS or something like that. We're not doing that for someone else, it's, it's our own equipment.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I, I think we have to kind of think about this building is. Hitchcock said that. You know, the, the uses that might go in here over the years, could change. You're gonna wanna have as much flexibility as possible, sure to allow that to happen. So consequently, I think, I think a. Well detailed site plan is gonna be necessary. You know, the water main alone is gonna require. There has to be size for the sprinkler service and so forth. But I, I think that's, it's all doable, it really seems. As I.
Three's a charge, and I'll take, we'll take business.
And just to say that I have seen a lot of the work that some of these companies have done and they really do beautiful buildings. So I think some of the exterior visuals that they provided are. On, on par, be a nice improvement in that spot.
What's your timetable for coming to us with? A horrible site plan review?
Is that an engineered review? By an.
It would be, yeah.
Yeah, so I can give you a little bit of background, what they've sort of alluded to, we have two site plan review standards and you just saw, you just saw before your, your session here. You saw the, the two, there's, basically the difference is slight increase in the fee goes from two hundred fifty to five hundred for major, for minor. And then the submission requirements. This is a major submission requirement. This is minor. You can see the difference in terms of, the, the ma- major requires a stamp, they want to, this one was engineering ventures. That did, from plodding. And it's, you know, just a little higher standard of. Like Tim is alluding to drainage, something that can be professionally expected to hold up in a severe storm, those kind of things. Whereas if you looked at the first applicant that came in tonight, it was just basically provided us with a, with a very. Low. Sketch. A sketch, that was his, that was his design. So you see the, the difference between major and buyers, this sort of level of detail that we expect. And you can see why that is. It's a much more significant project, it's much more significant standards that we hold to for application materials. And submissions. But it's gonna be better for you too, if you have an engineered plan. Somebody that's doing your drainage and. Just some structure, load bearing, all that kind of stuff, it's bringing in town water. Yeah, that would definitely, I think as soon as you, that's a big tap into that system, it's a wet tap and. Coming across from four. Yeah, the engineer standard goes up because you're underneath the highway, it's been about traffic and. I know that, just talking to public works, they've always said, anytime you go underneath the street, the engineering standard goes much higher.
Yeah.
We had, we had somebody that wanted to run water to their place. And at first they were hoping to get neighbors to let them kind of go across, and that could be just a black plastic line, you know, kind of going in. Then he was like, no, I think it should probably go under the street because I can't get the neighbors to give me easements. And that just basically made it a much higher level of detail because it has to be engineered. For low grade descent. Shut offs and curb stomps and all those different things that go into it. Talked to public works. Depth capacity, so it's concerning.
Okay.
James, I'm interested in another question.
Yeah, we, questions from C L E or comment?
Yes, um, before Murphy. Rearrange the. Whole area in there. Move things out, put rock down, that was a, there was a wet one there. And. That was, when Martin went in there, that was more defined because of, of the water that comes off, the roof that comes off, pour A and so on and so forth. And so, but that water would collect down there and that's why you had the wetland vented taken and there was concern that, you know. It been, you know, pooled up or is it gonna go down to the cemetery or, you know, and if you notice next to. Across that driveway and at Murphy's plant, you know, he's got a pond down there now from digging, because it, there's water. Right there on the ground, so I don't know how, but stores put all water, but anyway, just to make. Everybody aware. And so now you have the rocks that go down, I don't know how good it is, how bad it is, but, and then it has only a small area of, of the dirt, so. I don't know how that's gonna work in the bigger picture with the rain and the roof and the drainage, so. I guess why I make you guys aware, that's what.
That's why it's a major site plan review, which requires an engineer who knows about this stuff. To, to look at it and decide what needs to be done.
Yeah.
So if the water goes where it needs to go and doesn't go where it would be considered problem.
The other part, the other side of the building, that bad with drains. But, because it was there and I don't know.
As I say, that, you know, that's an engineering design problem and when he comes back to us with his drainage plan. Then we'll take a look at it and we'll ask questions. And I would encourage you to be here at that point so that you can understand what's, you know, what's being performed.
Maybe fix that, who knows, you know, the way he did.
Yeah, I mean, who knows, exactly.
I mean, it's, it's possible to. Have some of your functions there and not, perhaps having, I guess the sprinkler system seems to be the thing that. Pumps it up to a level, but. It's expensive. What I said, what I'm saying is that if you had a, if you started off with a simpler. Operation out of that building, you might not need a major site plan until such time as. Really change the parking lot grades.
And that's kind of how my. Timeline would work. In the immediate, I would put wood shop in. I wouldn't have a lumberyard and I wouldn't have a tenant back, and in doing so, I wouldn't be raising. Possibly wouldn't be raising existing grade. Possibly would be raising existing grade, um because I, there is a garage door in the end of that building that would be our access. I guess I'm kind of looking at doing this in phases as I can afford to do it, uh but phase one, we put in the wood shop and. This, this is the ultimate at all.
I I think you'd still need a major site plan review because of the change of use.
Not with that. Then your grandfather again for the rest of the expansion, ready to go through. That's all taken care of. Otherwise, you have to come back again if you're gonna put something else in.
Do you remember, did Martin do a major site plan when he did the conversion over to Dog, Dog Kennel? I didn't think that was a major.
Did Percy do anything?
I don't remember.
Percy did nothing.
He just start, he just.
I think he did pull a building permit for the installation. He didn't have a change of use because he never put it there. Mostly, I mean, most of the work that he did was cleanup.
Right, so a change of use requires a major.
I mean, I can pull that section for you guys.
Yeah, I mean, a a change, a change of use above a certain number. Which I think is, I don't know, let me, let me find it and I'll read through the language.
So a minor review by the planning board shall be required for the following. Change of use for non-residential site for which no change floor area is proposed. And which either maintains or decreases the intensity of use on the site with respect to parking demand, traffic generation. Or for a site with twenty-five hundred square feet or less gross floor area. Minor sites review is also expansion of non-residential floor space by five hundred square feet or less, no changes. Site improvement alterations without new development, redevelopment, expansion or change of use. Other minor amendments to existing sites and non-conforming uses that the board decides not to require major review. Then major review by the planning board shall be required for the following. Establishment of a non-residential use where no non-residential use currently exists. Establishment of a multifamily use where no multifamily use currently exist. Or any other development, redevelopment, change of use or expansion of a multifamily or non-residential site. Out addressed in sections one five dot two or one five dot three.
So the building is more than twenty-five hundred square feet and that's what takes it into the major category. But a- as Phil said, you know, if we can do a site plan review. That covers your full expansion, you don't have to come back a second time or even a third time. So that would be to your advantage, if that's.
If that's possible, a change of business would not be a change of use. If we approve it for. Whatever, light industrial. Right, so probably the entire building, long as light industrial was still going in there, right, would be approved. Good luck, you'd probably be looking for a light industrial with retail.
I wanna find.
No, we put it in.
Is that a special? Special exception?
No. We didn't put it in the C B zone, we put it in the root four zone. But this is.
So, next, Alan. What you wanna do, I I haven't had. Probably you can do it faster than I could read.
That is the uh formal presentation there, with all the details and legal stuff. Uh Alan Strickland, my wife, Marcia Heron, and uh basically, uh we're here. Uh because we would like a a purchase from our neighbor, uh one tenth of an acre, which includes that shed. And uh to do that, we need your approval, uh because our lot is. For half an acre and our neighbor's lot is exactly one acre. So even though we will be moving toward a conforming lot, our neighbor's lot would be less conforming. So. Um and they, we've we've talked to our neighbors and they're more than happy, they're they're tired of maintaining that area. It's closer to our property and we would like to include that shed and building for our our property. And just a little history on that, on that shed, uh that used to be attached to a house. And that was back when we moved in there in nineteen eighty-nine, Florence Garnum lived there. And she died in two thousand one. And at that time, her daughter, Jean Williams, and husband Dan, Daniel, uh we. Moved in and decided to to rebuild on the lot at the far western end. And they demolished that house but left the shed. So the shed ended up being a long ways now, it's now is a long ways from the new house that our neighbors have, now currently live in. And much, much closer to ours and visually it looks like it should belong to our property instead of their, so. This is, this is straightforward, this is not complicated, it's just every, uh we would like to. You know, at least uh be able to purchase it. That's probably less, less complicated thing, I don't mind.
We might be wrong. Because I don't think we could make a non-conforming lot out of a conforming lot. So yeah, so this, this law here, this is the neighbor's lot, right? Which, which one, number two? This is their law.
There's a map there also.
So yeah, so this, this is, this is their law here, right?
Right.
Which is a non-conforming lot in the R one zone, right, obviously one acre minimum, right? Now, this one is a conforming lot at exactly one acre. So your conundrum here is, can you? Add land to this lot, thus making this a non-conforming, it's not gonna be enough land to make this one a conforming.
They're both gonna be non-conforming, we're gonna be going from a conforming and non-conforming to two non-conforming.
But we're more conforming.
He is non-conforming.
Yeah. So, is there, is there any way that you could, um, well, I don't know if the board would agree to do this. But is there any way that you could increase the amount of property that you buy so that you have an acre?
No, no, no.
And what about this lot? Could you do a three-way with this lot to the back?
No three-ways.
Well, you you've done three-way.
There's a strong aim in between.
No, at that point, it's a, it's a lot line adjustment, is all we're looking, we would be looking at, would there be a way? Say that, well, no, that they could. Exchange land on their lot for land on two to keep it at one acre. Since I'm there, but and them at the same as they are now.
This is a big lot here, well, I know, but that's not, that's not their lot, it's, it's not, no, but I'm just curious if they. Have any interest, I don't know if you ever talked to those guys.
Across the stream, it's it's a D very, yeah, not, yeah, exactly.
Where is the, um, where's the the new master plan directing us to head in Enfield Center?
I can't tell you exactly where it is at this point in time. Um, we have to deal with this as it exists tonight.
Well, well, that's the reason I'm asking the question. Except I I I think we're not the board that has has to rule on this anymore, it's the C B A.
No, we'd have to.
What's that, the C B A?
A variance.
Which they would have to give him a variance tonight.
So, you know, he doesn't need a variance?
Well, if he wants to do what he wants to do, he would need a variance. And then we would have to agree.
As I've contemplated it, after talking to these nice folks, as I've contemplated it further. The other idea, this may, this may make it simple like you were just talking about. Is that you could do a long-term lease with your neighbor, that they actually lease you.
They still own.
Portion of land that you want for a long-term lease, which happens all the time, if you go into West Lebanon. Where those giant buildings are, Home Depot, they have no lot lines, and those are actually somebody else's land that they just lease for long. Or lease, that would take care of it for, you know, your wife and your children's life if you wanted it that long. It could be a ninety-nine-year lease for a defined area of their land. By all intents and purposes, it's your land because it's your lease, you could work out some kind of financial arrangement with them that basically makes it your land. But it's not your land, you know what I mean, that.
Would it be surveyed and surveyed out?
I don't think so, nope, that actually gets you out of the survey because the survey is gonna be expensive.
That's right.
But I think this could be a more, right, more of a, you know, have a lawyer draw up a lease. What are the, what are the dimensions of the leased area?
At ninety-nine year lease.
Yeah. Well, that may be a great compromise position for us.
Right.
You know, uh. Because I I think these guys have hit the nail on the head that. As we, as we consider it, if it was, if it was sewer and water lots, we could go down to half an acre, that's right. But it's not, but it's not, with municipal sewer and water in the in the downtown area. We have the authority to take you down to a half an acre in size subdivision. Uh but this doesn't, unfortunately, it probably needs sewer and water down there, would be great to expand the sewer system all the way down to the center. That would certainly help a lot of lots down there, but failing septic systems, but that's, that's a fifty, sixty-year project probably for us. But I think the least thing, twenty million dollars, exactly, without major investment by the federal government.
Right.
We're not doing that anytime soon, although we did get closer, we get at the lake. It's still, it's still a ways away.
What what would be the tax implication? Because the shed is taxable. The land is taxable, but it's.
There's different styles of leases that you can arrange.
For the net, net lease.
That's it, or what they call. That's how.
You're gonna pay any, you know, you would pay the taxes on.
That's how Home Depot does have the Johnson, Johnson family owns the land underneath Home Depot.
Right.
They have a ninety-nine-year lease.
Right.
And Johnson family just gets a check, they don't have to do anything, they don't have to plow snow, they'd have to pay taxes. Home Depot does everything, clean laundry, their land.
Clean laundry was the same way, it was a ninety-nine-year lease and. The people that used to, all they got was a check every month, they didn't pay any taxes on it.
Whatever arrangement you were considering with them, you could still have that consideration.
Yeah, but for, from the town's point of view, is the town gonna break? Break up a single one-acre parcel and come up with two different taxes?
That would be a question I would ask Julie or down.
Because, because that would be key to the whole thing working.
I think that that is the way it can be arranged, as I said. Home Depot pays Lebanon direct for their taxes.
They they have the entire lot.
They they lease a portion of the Johnsons.
No, they don't have the entire lot.
What they actually have for you is the Johnsons' business and the golf. They still own that.
Yep, and they just leased a portion of it.
Yep, so I'm sure there's a combination that can be made, we can talk to Julie about that for you. I would talk to a good uh real estate attorney about uh some kind of a lease arrangement that that case. I'm sure the taxes on that shed at this point are very normal.
Alan, we we plan to build something.
But the shed needs a lot of repair. I'm not sure. I'm not sure what, putting money into the shed, somebody else's shed, but it did take so long, it used about ninety-nine years.
Yeah. If it's, you know, work it out for long term.
It's so hard, uh the question I asked about the master plan, what it, what it envisioned is for in the center. Because of the on-site septic situation, it's like wells. Probably not gonna change.
Probably not. I can't give you a definitive answer.
I I would say, I mean, from what I've observed in the master planning process, that certainly village center density has come up. And and they're definitely looking at increasing density.
Yes.
Because, you know, the original intention of zoning, when it was adopted in most communities in New Hampshire and Vermont. Were that we wanted people to be in the downtown, we wanted villagers vital. And we wanted to preserve open space out of the back roads, the converse of that has been the truth. The villages are largely unchanged in the last thirty, forty years. And the back roads, in the backlands, Seeley can attest to this, has been chopped up and and developed. And it's a great sadness for me to see farm fields. Get cut right down the middle and they come in and strip the top soil off and put house, 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 house. That's not what we intended when we adopted zoning, we want people to be in the downtown, so I think in order to do that, we need to relook at those ordinances. And maybe encourage smaller lot sizes, higher density, I mean, we're, we're, we're piloting a project with our shed street. Location, now that granted is a sewer and water lot, but. You can definitely squeeze, I mean, the the state of New Hampshire actually came within eleven votes of going, we we now allow one A D U per lot. They were looking to allow three A D Us per lot, residential lot with no extra land requirements, which would. Which would change a lot, wouldn't it, Phil, I mean, you've got that A D U on your land, you could put two more. And I mean, the thing that they like about the A D U ordinances, you're kind of shoehorning it in to existing properties that. You could still drive by and say, there extra units in there, I I don't know. Could just be a big farmhouse or it could be five units in there. So it's really low impact, it doesn't really confront anybody as long as the wastewater and building codes are followed and. You know, the sewage is treated and handled properly.
To Alan's, uh the Strickland's. Dilemma here, um. You don't understand this. So they would need to apply frozen variants. Or to do what they propose.
Correct.
That application would go to the C B A.
Right.
So why are they here?
Conceptually, which is a non-binding, let's look at the, let's have the board look at what they wanna do and react. So our.
But they could have gone directly to the Z.
They could have, yeah. But our, you know, our, our non-binding uh shoots-from-the-hip reaction is. No, can't do what you wanna do because. It would make the one-acre lot a non-conforming lot, and that's not a lot. So, you know, we're, we're talking about go into the C B A, get a variance and see if the C B A will let you do that. My guess is. Us in fifty percent chance that they would, but. You never know. Um and then we're talking about, you know, some sort of a long-term lease, which would uh. Avoid the whole issue of lot sizes and still get. Alan and Marcia the shed that they want.
Does seem ironic, and you know, our house is the historic center of Enfield Center and that this whole, it should be smaller lots, it really is. But that's out of. Crazy.
And, you know, you could wait and see if that happens.
No, how long would that be?
I I'm not going out of a limb on that, Marcia. It could be.
But with a lease in place, if the ordinance did change, that would enable this to happen. But if I lease an extra.
You might be able to put in the lease to some sort of right of first refusal if it ever got sold, whatever, something like that, like, or if the zoning changed.
If they, if these people moved on, so the, so the place, then the lease would be still.
Yeah, we should be in place.
The lease would have to run with part of the, with the new owners, part of the deal.
Which may well be a recent new. Which may well be a recent new, might not want to do it because it just complicates the sale.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You know, you, you got to talk to, you got to talk it out.
Yeah.
I think, I think probably zoning is the way you're going to have to go. Or as I, as I had suggested earlier, to involve another property owner if we can get more land.
Yeah.
Someone give us a tenth of an acre is all we need.
We can keep down at one acre and get you guys the little tiny piece that you want. Then you're in business too. Even, even though, even if it's land across the stream.
Yeah.
It doesn't really matter because they would have enough land.
Then the Stricklands are in a situation by two parcels.
Right.
Right.
But we're talking about little slippers land. We're not talking about great swaths. We actually, you know, we have eyes as the tab, you probably heard this, on this parcel here.
Oh, that, that, that.
Yes. Uh, you know, a lot of us have dreamed about.
Right.
Fixing this space, for one. Uh, this space has no bathroom, no well.
No park.
Right. You know, if we can acquire this, this gentleman has told us he'll sell it to us. He wants to move to Florida.
Right.
And we could pull that trailer out, use the well and the septic system before.
In the town, it's a tenth of a.
Sure.
Yeah.
Make this happen. And that would, I mean, obviously the other thing about that parcel, if you look at it, it's very odd shape.
Yeah.
Goes way out and back here. It's fronted, so there's probably some subdivisible.
Yeah, but it's. At this point, it's non-stuck.
Yeah.
Not enough for these folks.
Because they don't want to have to deal with it.
Right.
At this point, it's not your main.
Right.
Yes. But.
Yeah.
We've given you a few options.
Yeah.
So, sorry, it's not exactly.
No, sorry. We, we didn't know what to expect. Yeah.
We weren't. We appreciate you coming in to see us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was fun.
Well, we, we hope you, we hope you work something out with someone and we'll see you again soon.
It was, this is the first step. We didn't want to get too far down the road.
Yeah.
Really.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Rob.
Okay. Thanks for coming in. I have nothing new to report on master plan. Old business.
Well, well, hold on.
Okay.
I think we're at that point where we were expecting the draft to be.
We were.
You said anything about.
I have reached out to her. I have not received a response. I will try to follow up with a phone call.
Can you hear something? Could you just notify us, uh, officially?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Really anxious about.
Uh.
See, yeah.
Me too.
Yeah. I, I've not heard anything like, you know, she's fallen off a cliff or left the state. And I, you know.
We were thinking maybe she's on vacation.
Yeah, you know, it's July. She could be out of town for a week. But I will, I will follow up with a phone call, not tomorrow, but Friday.
Okay, so to, um, here that step forward, the grants for rewriting zoning ordinances? Yeah, I'm actually attending a seminar tomorrow. So I've already been to one. Uh, so the hundred million dollar total.
Right.
Uh, amount that they've allocated.
We only need a million.
It's, it's actually broken into various funds.
Right.
And the first one that I attended actually makes money, I think it's five million of a hundred million. Makes it available for, uh, property owners like Phil.
If you had a property.
Yeah. And you wanted to.
Mr. Keller might be.
So. But I would say not for him because he's not actually converting anything.
It's converted. It's not new.
But I will absolutely reach out to him and talk to him about it. There's, there may be. Of course, as I get more training, the other funds may be available for that. There is some cost-sharing money available in that, in that total till for.
So the first one you went to was for home or for?
For owners. Yeah.
Probably.
They got, he's taken it back.
Yeah, so it's, it's basically, they, they will grant you as a matching. If you've spent five hundred thousand of your own money, they will give you five hundred thousand for the creation of workforce housing.
Right.
And it is, it is a grant. It's not a loan. And they give it to you. And, uh.
Is this, is this town or state?
State, state, state. And it's a, it's a minimum of six or eight units that you have to. But tomorrow's seminar that I'm going to, we'll talk more about the planning side.
Right.
Which we've already done a bunch of research on. After we get the master planning done, there is money available to redo your zoning, to basically make it more favorable to housing. Specifically for workforce housing, because that's what we're looking for, which, which is, you know, there's a definition there and, and rents are sort of charged. But it's, it's reasonable rent. I mean, it's not like section eight housing. It's not, uh, giving away, but it is, you know, if you're going to rent it to somebody for fifteen hundred bucks a month for a one-bedroom apartment, that, that counts. That's, that's, uh, that's well within.
So we've got Keller here, here. I mean, I think we all see the potential and there's money available to get him going sooner than he's able otherwise. And if some of those then units end up with, uh, lower rents, because. Let's do that.
Yeah, I'm in very steady communication with Jeff. He's, uh, he's, I mean, he's doing lots of projects, as you probably know, various. He's finished up a big project on Meadow Lane for some people down there. That one actually was kind of a neat bit. Do you guys remember, uh, uh, Nabil El Ku, do you remember? Ran, he was right on Main Street. I think it was sixty-four Main Street. Uh, it's an era ago. Was that his name of this business?
Right.
An engineering firm. And he closed the shop and I think he moved west and sold his place in Shaker Village, where he lived, Nabil and Sheila. And so that place went vacant and we had a couple of close misses with other tenants to go in there. Well, this guy, Mr. Wyman, who's building a place on, uh, Meadow Lane, beautiful place, called me and said, I'm looking for a place. I'm in an engineering, small engineering firm. I do research in, uh, biofuels, ethanol. I said, have I got a spot for you? And so he's actually taking the lease on that space. So we actually have an engineering firm going in where the engineer firm was. So that's kind of a win for us.
On Main Street.
Right on Main Street. Yep.
Uh, so, um, could we not be sending out requests for proposals for professional services for the, uh, consulting on a new zoning?
Yeah, I could talk to the town managers to spend something.
You know. Other words, uh.
It's gonna happen.
Poses out there, talk to the people, the consultants, find the one we'd like to work with. Obviously not sign a contract, but we got a magic plan down. That's what's, that's step out of the way.
Yeah.
We've been working on it.
Yeah.
We worked on it.
No reason why, you know, we couldn't try to get somebody lined up in advance.
Yeah. Well, I would say to you that, uh, actually we've worked with Brandy, our current contractor. She did, uh, a new zoning district overlay for us. The Route Four Zone District was, was her, was her work. Uh, and that's what she does as well. Obviously, we, we need to get through this little patch where she hasn't gotten back in touch with us. Uh, I'm hoping. We've, we've had nothing but good, good luck with her so far. It just seems like she went dark on us.
And, you know, she would be my choice because she's up to speed.
Right.
Yeah. Sometimes the grants require you to have an RFP and all that sort of things.
Yeah.
I need to find out tomorrow. It would be great to have that lined up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would we, would we need to take it to town meeting in order to extend grant funds? You know, like what can, can accept grant funds so they can also expand grants?
Okay.
That makes it easier.
May keep it clean if we do get approval, just to typically expenditure of funds on our part. Has to have some sort of authorization from some, uh, town meeting action. They can certainly accept the funds. We're given a grant. They can certainly do that.
Well, yeah, but if you're giving the grant, you're, you're also saying you're going to expend it. You know, they accept it. They, they expend it.
Yep.
There's a, there's a basic clause and I don't worry about that.
Right.
It's one that every year you pass.
Yeah. I mean, we were having a conversation the other day. We fired a, we have a new full-time maintenance guy. They, they let our janitorial service go. So we have a guy that does custodial work and maintenance. He'll fix the door lock and, you know, right, install new ballasts or whatever we need to do. He's pretty much a jack-of-all-trades for us. It's been excellent. They were talking about, well, we need to get him a vehicle so he can run around town. He's like literally going to all of our facilities in his own Honda Civic. And somebody's like, oh, well, can we just get him a car? And Lisa from town office is like, no, without spending authorization from town meeting, we can't do it. That's capital.
Yeah.
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 So. I would say, I don't know. We can certainly, I can certainly ask town manager what he thinks about that. We're, we're going to get more information because the Office of Planning, New Hampshire State Planning, is doing this training for us. And, uh, I think they had actually town manager's down at town as well. He's very interested in all of us. The housing thing is really sort of top of mind for us, as it is for all towns in the upper valley.
Sort of changing on some, a lot of the, I mean, they're pushing a lot of the zoning changes as we speak.
Yeah.
You know, sinews one after another, signing.
Yeah.
And builds before, or. Every day.
Yeah, I went to the, uh, Upper Valley Vital Communities, had a breakfast last, last month, June. And they had presentations from everybody, uh, in the housing industry and so forth. They did a, like a little bit of a legal update from the town, from the state perspective, as I said, that ADU thing where it came within eleven votes of actually adopting the new state, statewide zone, basically, which they, which they did with the ADU. Where they admitted that any New Hampshire town that has zone has to allow an ADU in a residential lot without additional land acquired. And so if that continues that trend, you may see stuff like that coming down. They're really pushing it. And of course, that Housing Appeals Board was an example of that too. They streamlined the appeals process for housing. So.
Right.
They, they, you know.
Well, they came, they, one of their cases was, you can't tell people you want to have affordable housing and then planning boards hold it against them for doing affordable housing.
Yeah.
Well, in the case of, say, Mr. Keller, say we, uh, came up with some crazy condition that, that he didn't like. Uh, is that, is that where he would go?
Absolutely. He has that as a option. You have, now you have two options. You either take it to Superior Court, which is the traditional, oh, yeah, but he has to take.
He's got to go to the BBA.
Oh, yeah. He has to take his EBA. Yeah, that's a, that's a new state thing, right? Your appeal first goes to ZB.
After that.
Then it can go to either Housing Appeals Board or Superior.
Well, we said your plan process is painted pink.
Right.
He didn't like it. The CBA could overrule us.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
If he says you've got to have it pink, he could then go to the Housing Board or the Superior Court.
That's correct. Correct.
Okay, could, could we bring the discussion back to the agenda?
Yeah.
And it's, it's after nine and.
Yes.
People are I think anxious.
Ready.
Go home.
Yeah.
Um, old business, Mr. Conkey, uh, the gravel pit. While we are non-acceptable hearing or site, site plan we did the other day, we approached Mr. Conkey for some better graphics and he complied. What he has, or what he got from the attorney is a stamped engineered drawing. And we colored it in, uh, for the areas that are pertinent to discussion. So I think we've got.
Yeah, I will, I will forward that out.
I think we've got a lot better, uh, thing to work with when we speak with him on.
Weeks of.
Ten of August. Um, I get the impression that there are still a lot of people from Eastern Community that.
It will be the most contentious since I've been here. I have. I know it will be. I bet this room. I mean, I'm going to try to set it up for fifty people.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we want to move with that, the community building, to keep pressure. Maybe.
Correct, clearly.
Yeah.
All right, see you.
It's. That's the end of the prime one.
Good.
Where that is.
I agree.
And if you go, if, if you have the actual wetland map, it'll show you how it goes all the way down there. Down, down toward, on, all one thing. So it's there.
Daniels, Daniels, Mark.
Yeah.
The quest we set. He had to get it.
That's what he's applied for?
That's all he's doing is permit.
But the problem.
Gravel. Problem is, is it is approved today as a gravel pit. It's not a change of use.
Nope.
And it's been operational.
It's operational, probably what, fifty, sixty years?
Right. It's a change.
It's a change of owner. So.
Well, sixty years. I mean, it's a whole different ballgame now.
Well.
I mean, it's.
Um, that, that that particular hearing, had we had it, I was, I was feeling really, really, uh, unprepared. Which was at first, but, natural, but in that I have no context to which to think about that, that project.
Yep.
There's a history there. You know, what, what's, what are the issues we're trying, we need to decide?
Yeah.
That sort of thing. And I feel like, uh, written summary of that, perhaps, Rob?
Memo?
Yeah, memo.
Sure.
I'll set that up.
You know, that, that's the kind of thing that hopefully he, I would be able to draw, so that the applicant have hearing.
Well.
Getting it in advance.
If we, if we knew, if we knew the context of the project, that sort of thing, earlier, we could think about that ahead of time.
I agree.
Yeah.
But we don't always get that luxury.
If, I'm also happy to chat if you ever wanted to swing by. I could talk to you a lot about that.
The other thing here, though, is gravel pit, it's sort of different in that this is not a change of use.
Right.
But whenever a gravel pit changes hands, the new owner has to get a permit. He doesn't have to get a site plan approval. He doesn't have to get, it actually, if, if, if it hadn't sat with no gravel going out and it was seamless, so gravel was going out, and new ownership, he wouldn't need a new permit.
Right.
But because it sat without him actually excavating, that's the state law, the excavation.
Right.
Yeah. That he had to get a new permit. But the use from a zoning standpoint is established.
Right.
And I've had many conversations with.
Grandfather.
Correct.
Many, many people from Eastman, they just can't understand that.
Right.
And well, and. See, where does it say that? I, I pulled it up. It's actually a case law.
Yeah.
And, and that comes up because we've, I gave them an example how it could cut the other way. Where, remember the Marina on, uh, Main Street?
Yeah.
Where somebody bought that, turned it into a house.
Right.
And then they came back later and said, we want to put it back to a Marina. And we said, sorry, you turned it into a house, specifically abandoned that use.
Right.
Whereas in this Conkey situation, there was no intentional abandonment. The guy died.
Right.
Maybe you could say that's an abandonment, but that doesn't mean the state test.
Right.
And this, and the case law, which is most important.
Right.
There's a two-part test. The abandonment, and there's actually a case that they cite, was a case of a guy had a mobile home on a lot in a district where they didn't allow mobile homes, but it was grandfathered. Well, they made, made the mistake, they pulled the mobile home out.
Right.
There's your abandonment, right there, that was a specific thing that they did, they abandoned it.
But this gravel pit has not been abandoned.
Has not been abandoned, they, they didn't do anything with it, it just sat there.
And if I don't, just because I'm not taking dirt out, doesn't mean I've abandoned it.
Exactly.
It means I'm not getting paid.
Paid enough for gravel, I don't want to.
Still piles of gravel sitting there, I mean, there's still, still gravel there, you know what I mean?
In fact, what we learned about that too was, when you file it and attempt to excavate, you pay tax on when they dig the material out and stack it.
Right.
Once it's stacked, you've already paid the tax on that, so he can actually take that gravel tomorrow.
Right.
Because the ex, the excavation took place years ago.
And the old permit.
And there wasn't a reclamation plan. Yeah, and so I told the people at Eastman, they wanted to buy, some of the people in Eastman. I said, be careful there because they, they gave an asking price offer to the previous owner, hundred seventy-five thousand, which was Conkey paid for it.
Yeah.
But if they had won that, they would have been on the hook for the reclamation, which could cost a quarter of a million dollars in excavation materials, so.
So it hasn't grown over in sixty years.
That will also be on the ballot. Really, absolutely, we can look right at it.
Yeah.
And in fact, what's really interesting is, you could go back in Google Earth and look back over time, and you could see all the roads leading into Eastman, because that's, that's what built Eastman, that's how. And everybody's like, well, there's the beautiful pond down there, we need to protect. Well, you know why there's a pond there? That's where they dug all the gravel out.
Absolutely.
For Eastman, and that, that's actually what Conkey wants to do is, is the reclamation is, ultimately, when he's done in the ten acre excavation area, he wants it to be a ten acre pond right there. Which will be beautiful if you ask me, but they are just, I mean, it's.
Rob, you could have been an attorney.
They're coming hard.
Eastern call.
Absolutely. But the, the Eastern people are fired up, and this one's gonna go all the way, I guarantee it.
You could summarize.
I will, I will, yeah.
What you just said. Bury them.
Yeah, but I don't know about you, but I think we may want to get the community.
Um, yeah. Yeah.
So you, you want to make that claim?
If it's available, yeah.
Let's do that.
When is that?
Tenth of August.
Tenth of August.[1623.11]